We will open the Planning Board meeting of June 15, 2021. This is the selectmen's room. We have come back into the selectmen's room, so we're all in attendance. The meeting is being recorded by MCAM and may be viewed on MCAM, Verizon, and Comcast for those wanting to watch commission meetings at their convenience. MCAM offers on-demand viewing through the Internet. Type MCCAM02346.com in your browser at the MCAM website. Click on GOV, Channel Program Schedule. Choose Planning Board for the latest meeting on view, and the videos will open. Call the meeting to order if everybody would like to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic of the original states, one nation, under God, indivisible, the very essence of the heavens.
All right. Next, I will go to announcements of continuing meetings or hearings. I do not believe we have any as that, not correct, Ms. Bradley?
Correct.
Okay. Unanticipated, does any board member have anything unanticipated? Seeing none, do we have anyone in the audience that has anything unanticipated?
Actually, Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
I was, I thought we were going to meet in the zoning board tonight. Is that meeting scheduled for different meeting?
That will come under number one, site plan approval by law decision on site plan approval authority. Planning Board is ZBA. My understanding originally is that the Planning Board, the ZBA, and the Selectmen were going to meet. That was what that was set up for. Since then, Mr. Healy has told me that the zoning board is not ready, so we'll talk about that when we get there. So, anything else from any board member or anyone in the audience? Going on, payment of bills. We have one bill, and I am going to recuse myself on it. And I'd like to also take something out of order, so I only change over the chair once tonight. So, I'd like to have Mr. Healy take over the chair to do a payment, the payment of bills, and number two, under other. So, I'm going to choose myself to lead the board at this time.
All right. We have a bill from Jacob Driscoll Engineering regarding the works they did on Cranberry Woods. It's in the amount of $687.687.50.
Motion to pay the bill, as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. opposed? There's a pro. No, we got to find the other one.
Number two under other, Chapter 61A, B, Right First Refusal, map 23, law 1465.
For me? Have you got the copy of this here?
I believe it was in your cabinet.
Jack, it's just this.
Is it 120 Thompson Street?
It's just that.
It's the, no, it's the off precinct. Thompson Street off precinct, the 3.25 acres.
Should we read the letter?
I'm not happy to. Regarding the notice of intent to sell for residential use land, which is or was taxed and classified as agricultural land under 61A, B of Massachusetts General Law. Dear Sir, I am the above entitled notice is hereby, herein within provided to you pursuant to the applicable provision of Section 14, Chapter 61, A, B of Mass. General Law. The property in question is located on Thompson Street and off of Precinct Street, and is a portion of the assessors' map, 23, law 1465, see attached plans. Consists of approximately 3.25 acres of land, and is a portion of that land an asset forth in the agricultural forestry liens recorded in the Plumb County Registry of Deeds, in Book 4556, page 399, Book 4556, page 400, Book 4556, page 401, Book 551, page 196, and Book 9890, page 84, Book 12255, page 216, and Book 14596, page 119, copies of which are attached heretofore. It is the intention of the below referenced owners of this property to sell this land, which will then be converted into a residential use. Pursuant to said statute, because of such intended sale conversion from an agricultural forestry use to residential use, the town of Middleborough has the option to purchase this property at the same price in terms as such intended sale. The sales price for the subject premises are more particularly described in the subject purchase and sale agreement in the amount of $50,000. The statute requires you to hold a public hearing to decide whether the town would like to purchase this property. We would respectfully request you to do so at your earliest convenience, although your town is entitled to a 120-day period to exercise its option. To purchase this land for the same price, it would be greatly appreciated if the matter could be expedited sooner. Any notification to the unsigned owners that the option will not be exercised must be made in writing. Signed by the Board of Selectmen, it should be mailed to Craig Maderas, Esquire, 98 East Grove Street, Suite 201, Middleborough, Mass. 02346. Thank you, Benson Family Realty Trust.
Mr. Tim?
Mr. Tim, in the board, if I may, Ed Maderas, partly the purchaser of this property. It's 3.25 acres of backland, has no frontage, adjoins land that we own already. So, and the PNS is in front of you, so really is of no real value to anyone except us or the people we're buying it from. They have 60 acres. This is all they would sell us, so that's why we're here.
Does this have to be approved by the selectmen as well?
Yes. The only thing the planning board, I believe, is doing is an advisory to the selectmen, advising them whether they think they should exercise their right of first refusal on the 61A or not.
So, we need to give some advice to the selectmen, is that?
That's correct.
Is there, anybody want to offer a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Make a motion, we do not exercise our right of first refusal on regarding the map 23, law 1465, Thompson Street. That's, the selectmen can do whatever they want. I would recommend that the planning board doesn't.
Yeah, doesn't recommend. All right. Is there a second for a motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion. Go ahead.
Well, I guess, I hate to see, you know, more land in Middleborough, having trees cut down, having the wildlife evicted. And it's gotten to the point where the wildlife rescue groups will no longer take animals that are, their homes are taken away, and they have advised, don't bring them to us, just take care of them. Because there's, you know, just so many animals that are being driven out, and it's becoming a problem, but that's just my thoughts.
I guess I'll second the motion.
I second it.
Oh, you did second it?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
You abstained?
Yes.
Can you come back now, Ms. Tim?
Thank you. The record will show that Mr. Maderas is back into the chair. We'll get back in into the order that we're doing things. So, we have approval of minutes. We have the June 1, 2021 minutes in front of us. Do we have any questions of any board member?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 1, 2021.
A motion, second by Mr. Frally. All those in favor? Miss?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Feels weird not doing the ball votes.
In favor? Well, I know, I'm used to that, so, okay. We'll go to form A's. We have a form A in front of us for Cordial Road, map 38, lot 3692, Claudette Victory. Our deadline is June 24, 2021. Do we have anybody here from the applicant to explain this form A? Just state your name and affiliation for the record, please.
My name is Bob Forbes from Zenith Consulting Engineers.
How you doing, Bob?
Good. How are you? So, it's, I think this is a fairly simple one. We've got a 4.1 acre parcel of land at the end of Cordial Road. This is Route 495, right here. And the owner of that parcel wants to subdivide it into two lots. The two lots have adequate frontage, have the upland circles, have the adequate area, shape factor, no wetlands on the parcel. And it's, I think that's pretty much it. It's in the general use district, so it requires 60,000 square feet, and that's what we've divided on these plans, on this plan.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do I have any questions of any board member?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
Is number 15, is that a house? Is the building that's being shown, is that a house?
Oh, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Can that lot back up on the highway layout?
Yes, it does. Yeah, this is the layout. All of this is the layout for the highway.
Any other board member questions?
Mr. Healy, do you know what's being planned for the other, for the breakout lot?
I don't know that at this point in time. I assume it's going to be a residential house lot at some point in time, one would assume.
Any other questions of any board members? Do I hear a motion? More approval, Mr. Jim? To endorse? Endorse. So, Mr. Healy, you're making a motion to endorse the approval, not required land on 15 Cordial Road, Middleborough, Mass. of Claudette, M. Victory, 15 Cordial Road in Middleborough, Mass., done by ZCEA engineers, dated 5/17/2001. I heard a second from Mr. Frally. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes aye, so that's unanimous. We're all set, Mr. Forbes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have B under public hearings and meetings. We have none tonight, so I would take a motion to take, I see Mr. Shaw in front of us, so I make a motion to take number four out of order so that we could get Mr. Shaw all set if we could.
So, who? Second.
All right, Mr. Frally, second by Mr. Healy. We have number four, Canisir, Route 44, Harding Street, traffic concerns, left turns, exiting parking lot. Mr. Shaw?
Hi, Tim Shaw, I'm at 2 Wareham Street. I did receive an email last week letting me know that this was a concern. And on that email, I did realize that the sign that was affixed at the end of the parking lot had been knocked over. We did get a new pole, re-cemented into the ground, and I did share pictures with you within the 24-hour period that that has been fixed.
You got them in that pack?
Perfect.
So, I guess I would ask anyone, I actually was the person that notified the planning board of this. But I have some concerns besides that. But is there anyone on the board that has a concern about that or any other concerns with this?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McGee.
I also noted when I was driving down 44 that there was a car trying to take a left-hand turn out of the parking lot, and I was going to notify if we didn't get the, it was, it was a little scary. I, I'm trying to remember on the special permit, if the sign was supposed to read, no left turn allowed, right turn only, or something like that.
Do you have that with you?
It just said right turn only?
No, I actually called Ms. Bradley on it, and she read verbatim. And I think it went something like that they have to put some type of signage up there to tell them no left turn. So, I guess, let me say my, my quick thing. So, the right turn only sign is probably five to six feet off the block top, and I think it's harder to see. I understand somebody already ran it over, so I understand that being any closer is probably even worse. I think that probably the right way to go is to put a white line out there and write no left turn on the block top. That's the ones that I've seen that have worked the best. The other problem I have is that, and I looked today, and there was three cars there today. There's often two to three cars parked on that grass out front. So, that's not a parking spot. That is supposed to be for a buffer zone. Not that there's anything next to you, but I just don't want it to get to be a practice. The problem is, even today, there was, I don't know, 10 or 15 parking spaces there to park, and they were parked on the grass. So, I don't know if that's maybe your employees or someone, why they're doing it, I don't know. Couple of days, I saw them parked on the grass when the parking lot was full. Do you, have you secured the lot across the street for parking yet, or no?
We're still negotiating terms as we speak.
Okay. So, I guess, the problem is, and I'm not, you know, I certainly give you time, I understand, but I think you need to do something about the left-hand turn, and I think what might straighten that out is, you know, the sign, I agree, got knocked over, so I'm not asking you to bring any closer, but I think a white stripe that says no left turn at that entrance would make a difference.
Can you specify a white stripe?
Whatever, I mean, six inches wide, just a white stripe that when they drive up, they see it, they stop, and if it says no left turn before it, it's every place that I've gone that you're not supposed to take a right or a left. That's how they usually do it, that I see. I'm sure it's.
You want it to say no left-hand turn in the concrete also?
On the, on the block top itself. Yep. I think the white stripe, whether it be four or six inches wide, I don't really care. It's just enough to alert them that there's something there, and then if it says no left turn.
Before it or after it?
Before.
Okay.
That's the way I've seen it generally. I would refer to someone that if you hire them and they're going to do it, but if you want to do it, I would say it's before.
I won't personally do it. I will be hiring someone to do it.
Right. But if you're hiring somebody to do it, I think they probably do it all the time, and if they generally do it after, they do it after. But I would think it'd be before. The ones I've seen have been before. But I think that, that's all you can do after that. You know, I don't know what you could do, but I'd like you to work on the parking so that, let's see. I don't know why they're parking that. I mean, like I said today, there had to be 10 or 15 parking spots, and there was three cars on the lawn.
It's my employees most likely making sure that there are enough parking spaces throughout the day, not taking prime parking. So, I will make sure no one parks on the grass.
Okay. Okay. That's the only concerns I have. Are there any other concerns of any other board member? Ms. Bradley, did we find that section?
The condition says the applicant shall provide clear and evident signage directing patrons and employees to exit vehicles onto Harding Street slash Route 44 via a right turn only.
So, I think it's pretty open what he should do. It appears that the right turn sign isn't working as well as it should, so.
I mean, you see stock signs in town, and people don't obey stock signs anywhere, or right turn signs all over the place.
I guess we can only do what we can do, and if you do that, I'd appreciate it.
And I'll do diligent and put the white line and go above and beyond for the town.
Okay. Appreciate that. Any other questions of the board member? Any questions of the general public about this? With that, I guess we're all set. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your willingness to go the extra mile.
Absolutely. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Can you just, Tim, could you just send along like a photograph after you do it, just so we have it for the file?
No problem. I'll send a photo as soon as it's painted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next thing we'll take is under other, number one, site plan approval by law decision on site plan approval authority, Planning Board is ZBA. My understanding of, two weeks ago, hadn't been told any different till tonight, was that we were hopefully going to meet with the zoning board and the Board of Selectmen to try to figure out this site plan approval and who would be the approving authority. My understanding is the zoning board is the last Thursday meeting. Didn't think it could be brought up till our 7-6 meeting. Do we have a meeting on 7-6?
We do.
Okay. So, they'd be willing to come into our 7-6 meeting? Is that in our track? Yeah. But we'd also like selectmen here too. So, the question is, is it more proper for us all to go to a selectmen's meeting, which is certainly up in the air?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure that the planning board, I mean, that the zoning board had agreed to come into the 7-6 meeting.
Okay. So, let me ask first of the board members, or may I take Mr. Man deal first, because he is on the zoning board. So, can you discuss a little bit about what they discussed?
They, we talked about questions that the board had on what was going on with it. I suggested that we submit questions to the secretary so that they could be forwarded to the planning board for answers prior to the next meeting.
Okay.
But there wasn't any decision as to when there was going to be a meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Healy?
From Tammy today, the zoning board secretary. She told me that it was to be posted as a joint meeting for July 9 meeting, the ZBA.
July 9 or July 6? July ninth or July sixth?
It's Thursday. It's the ninth, isn't it?
Oh, so--
It'll be a Friday.
That'd be a Friday, yeah.
That's even, so the zoning board, we'd be talking about it on July, or would it be with the planning board?
Well--
I mean, anybody's gonna be talking about it on the ninth.
No.
All right, let's--
The ZBA, joint meeting with the ZBA and planning and selectmen. I got selectmen in parentheses, but it's the--
So I think, let's hear from select people first and go from there.
I just wanted, Mr. Chairman, that we are going on summer schedule for the selectmen. We're off that week, so I can ask if people are available, but oftentimes they go away when we're off. So I can check and see if people are available. Our next meeting after that would be the twelfth.
Okay.
In the sheet here. Monday nights are never good for me because I have my own selectmen meetings and work.
So I guess, and this isn't a formal meeting, so we don't have to continue it, but I think that what we, what I would entertain is a motion from a board member that Planning Director tried to figure out a mutual agreeable day with the zoning board and the selectmen and try to get, I'd just as soon have it here at our meeting.
Yeah.
We've the ones that actually start the site plan review and are working on it, so I'd like it here if we possibly can.
So motion. Second.
All right. Motion and second. All in favor? Aye.
One comment. If we could try to make it like early, like one of our first things we do, that way we're not tying up the selectmen and the zoning board members waiting for us to go through hearings.
Okay. I don't think that's a problem.
So is that maybe we'd be looking to try and arrange it for the sixth?
Well, if you're, if the zoning board is willing to come, I think that what would happen is Ms. Bradley would contact their secretary and see when we all can get together and go from there. I mean, let them work it out, the logistics. I'd like to do it sooner than later, but at our board meeting if possible. So I have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Let us know as soon as you do, and I'll make sure whoever's in town is here.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Number three, Chapter sixty-one A, one-twenty Thomas Street, Discussion Board of Selectmen. I'll start this one off. I met with selectmen last night, discussed more of, and just for disclosure purposes, I met with the town planner and the conservation agent for a couple hours on Friday. Not necessarily about one-twenty Thomas Street, but talking about making some type of, maybe friends of, my first thought was Friends of Conservation Commission to exercise that right on the sixty-one As. Ones that made sense. You're still gonna work at it and figure out which ones make sense. If they're selling a lot for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it's worth a hundred and sixty, it doesn't make any sense for us to do anything. So I met with selectmen to see if they would entertain the thought of putting this or letting a nonprofit, assigning it to a nonprofit, and they were very enthused about the idea, I think. So that we are gonna have the town manager get a meeting with Copeland and Page, a couple select people, and me, and someone from the board. The problem is, I, we can only have two people there, otherwise we form a quorum, so. But we'd like to get together with Copeland and Page and see what it takes to, number one, make a nonprofit, but also, you know, what the selectmen would have to do in order to assign their rights and what liabilities there are in that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to be present at that meeting.
So that's what, so the one-twenty Thomas Street, just to let the board know, the governor is lifting the order on June fifteenth. The, all types of things like sixty-one As are told till September thirteenth, and then you have, you start your hundred and twenty days. So it actually goes to January thirteenth. So we have until January thirteenth to, or selectmen have to January thirteenth to vote on whether they are gonna exercise their right of first refusal or not. So we should do it long before that. I would hope that we have some idea of where we're going with it, whether a land trust works, whether it's viable, whether we should or shouldn't do it. I don't feel that we should hold up an owner any longer than we have to, so my opinion would be to meet with Copeland and Page sooner or later, see what their thoughts are in the liability of the town in general, and because the town, I don't think is in any shape to be buying it. They're working, I believe, on the Pecone Farm right now to do something with that, so that, you know, it's gonna take someone some time to set up the sixty-one A, but I think that at this point, we have the time, I have a little bit of time and energy to do that, so I'm willing to spearhead it a little bit, so.
Is this one-twenty Thomas Street, is that the tree farm?
Yes. That's correct. Mr. Frawley.
I don't know if you know anyone in Dotman. You probably do, but I believe that Dotman has a Division of Natural Resources Trust. So that's a town-based trust--
Yep.
--that puts land aside for exactly what we are talking about.
Right.
I might be able to give you some more direction.
That's what, you know, I mean, the meeting last night with selectmen was purely, do you have, are you opposed to the idea, are you in favor of the idea? Certainly now that I've got direction that they may be in favor of it, you know, the way, before we do anything, we're gonna go to Copeland and Page and see what liability they have to sell it to a nonprofit. So just to let you know, under sixty-one, which this property is sixty-one, which was forestry land, and this, the owner actually did use it as a tree farm. He did make his living off of cutting trees there. So under sixty-one, which is forestry, sixty-one A, which is farmland, sixty-one B, which is recreational land, all get a tax break. And to let you know, I tried to figure out, Thomas Street, this year is getting about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar assessment break, which equals about a four-thousand-dollar tax break. They've owned it since nineteen eighty-two. I didn't find out when they actually put it in sixty-one A, but if you take, they might have owned it for forty years, and it might have been in for close to forty years. Tax, they might have got a two-thousand tax break back then. If you average it out at three thousand, they've probably got a hundred and twenty-thousand-dollar tax break in the years that they've owned it. If the town exercises their right of first refusal, I don't believe there's any back taxes paid. If they, or if they do exercise their right of refusal, there's no tax to pay. If they don't exercise their right of first refusal, they, the twenty thousand, they'll have to pay approximately twenty thousand dollars, probably somewhere between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars back of those taxes. But it still comes out to a hundred thousand dollars that the town gave them for a break to keep it. And I've heard, since I've been to the selectmen's meeting, I've heard from at least a half dozen people, and they say, oh, is that that beautiful stretch of road that I drive guy bought down on Thomas Street? And Mr. Marzelli actually happened to plant trees in the front of his house, which used to be lawn, so they know it, as Jack knows, is the tree farm. Although it's a much bigger tree farm than just what the little piece he's got. He did actually farm the whole seventy acres of lumber, but selectively when he did it. So that's how he made it.
Does it include the street front lots?
It includes nineteen, approximately nineteen-hundred-and-twenty-six feet of frontage. So there appears to be enough frontage for nine lots, eight buildable lots, one lot with the house on it, and approximately a hundred and twenty-six feet of extra land, so that if we did something with it, there would be a hundred and twenty-six feet of extra land. The, under sixty-one, sixty-one A and sixty-one B, it does say that any nonprofit, if they are assigned it, must keep seventy percent in conservation-type restriction in perpetuity. So it isn't something that they can assign, the guy goes, somebody, the nonprofit takes it and sells the whole property. They can only sell a maximum of thirty percent of the property to recoup their money and/or put money in a trust for buying other sixty-one A land or, you know, whatever they deem is best to do, but I believe it has to stay in conservation-type purposes.
So, Mr. Chair, so the theory is that if we did this, we would take the entire property and sell the lots off and put it in trust for future land purchases?
That's correct. That would be, I mean, if I have something to do with it, that is my intention at this point.
And how much approximately would remain natural habitat versus development?
So there is seventy acres that is under agreement, approximately two acres, maybe a little walk, if I'll set way off the street. So there might be sixty-seven acres that we acquire. Seventy percent of that has to stay in conservation land, which is approximately fifty acres. If you take the eight street front lots, you're gonna take fifteen acres for those, leaves us with about three acres of playland, so it's really a nice number that rounds out well. But behind those fifty acres that we could conserve, there's six acres of town-owned land that was taken for tax title, there's ten acres behind that of town-owned land that was taken for tax title. Next to that, there is forty-eight acres of one lot that a person built a house thirty or forty years ago, has only kept one lot on it. Behind that is a hundred and thirty, or next to this piece that we're talking about exercising our right of first refusal on, there's approximately a hundred and thirty-six acres of farmland. It has some firmary bogs on it. And next to that one is a fifty-five acre parcel, so, which is mostly wetlands. That parcel, that fifty-five acre parcel, I'd say is forty acres of wetland and fifteen acres of dry, and that's it. And it's spotted dry. It doesn't connect very well, so I don't think they could do a lot with it. So the thing is, you know, and I think Conservation, which I'm a member of, voted not to exercise their right of first refusal. I never really looked at it, 'cause it was seventy acres of dry land that, you know, for conservation purposes probably didn't make a lot of sense. Then I looked at the map, found sixteen acres of town land behind it, and then the abutting parcels that if someone could work on, could, you know, I mean, I think to find two-hundred-and-fifty acres somewhat in this other town, not way down the other end of South Middleborough or, you know, where the farmland generally is, would be quite important, so.
Sure.
I think it could, you know, end up being something substantial, but, you know, we need to work with KPR and get that out of the way and then go from there. So any other questions of the board members? Any questions of the general public?
Mr. Chairperson, Louise Derry Wells, nine Chestnut Street. I just had a couple of questions. I drove by there today, and I noticed that on the frontage lots, they've done some clearing, right? Are they clearing that to perk? It looks like it's on the footprint of each, where each house would be.
Right. That's what, my belief is that they've gone in and perked it, perked the back as well as the front. I guess I'll leave it at that. I would say probably didn't do the needed job, but--
No, they didn't. Okay.
That's what that, I believe that's what that is, has been kind of perked.
So on the conservation decision, is that mostly because we have dry upland there and it's not as relevant a parcel in their view? I wonder what the decision process was about conservation, not recommending it?
I think that the reason Conservation voted the way they did was, number one, nobody really looked at it because it was seventy acres of dry land. Didn't think there was probably anything around it that you could connect to. And then, you know, sixteen acres is not a substantial piece that the town owns, it's sixteen acres, but if you take the fifty that you might be able to use with this, and at the same time, we are trying to exercise our right, I believe, on the Pecone Farm, so to have two of these at the same time is not gonna be easily done, certainly without help from an outside source. And that's why I actually went to selectmen last night and hopefully offered services to have an outside source other than town employees that are working hard at it, which Pecone Farm, if I had a choice, I still would have picked Pecone Farm.
Yeah.
Or the Thomas Street property. So, you know, that's, that's one of the things. I don't think that we would have the town resources to buy the Thomas Street property unless we do something, so.
My final question was on that final parcel of forty-some acres that you cited at the far end of the, of the extension of where this whole holding could be, or at least open space.
Yep.
Are you referring to the parcel that abuts up near Wood Street and Chestnut, right behind there? There's a lot of wetland behind there. It's, I don't think, buildable. I saw a wetland biologist in there, never years ago, but it might connect to that whole section of parcels.
I know that it's a roadway off of Chestnut Street called Aikenback Farm.
Okay.
That's Aikenback Farm Lane, I believe they call it. It's what the board, which I'd hopefully get back to doing it someday, we used to do what we call two-lot subdivisions. You put a full-scale, draw a full-scale road in and ask for waivers for all the construction of the roadway, but agree to only put one house in but have two lots. We have some beautiful two-lot subdivisions that people have built substantial houses on, and most of them, at the time, I redid it about eight or ten years ago, at that time, there was only like two school-aged children in sixteen of these houses. So I think that what it is is families that have had children that want to be out in the wilderness by themselves and, you know, have gone through the family stuff and they're, it's actually a good thing for the town. But that's what, this person has had that, I believe, over thirty years, probably closely forty years, and has done nothing with the land. So they still own it. Whether they could be approaching, whether they're interested in doing something, I have no idea, but it certainly gives you an idea that they probably don't want much done with the land if they've kept it for that long and left it alone, so.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Healy.
The Marzelli's lot, how big is that?
Seventy acres.
The house was--
Well, the, right now, and it's a lot of convoluted, we've gone through this with a few of the parcels already. The problem is, and I've gone through this with sixty-one A myself, the way the assessors do it is they take the whole parcel and they break out this imaginary two-acre lot in the two-acre zoning, one-point-eight-four-acre lot, and assess it at a full house lot. Then they assess the rest under sixty-one A. So when you actually try to find this one-point-eight-four acres, it doesn't really exist on paper. Only exists in the assessors' thoughts of when they assess things, so.
It's gonna have to be broken up.
Right. So it has to be, the house has to be formatted off, you know, I guess the question would be, they did the sixty-one A and insinuated that they were gonna bring a one-point-eight-four-acre lot. I think the house is close to four-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred feet off the street. If that's the case, if you broke out, you'd have to make an arch-shaped lot. I would hate to see these people punished to take two-hundred feet of frontage and not go back straight. And if it needs to be six-hundred feet longer than they need, you know, two and a half acres instead of one-point-eight-four acres, I'd like to see that done. I think it's kinda crazy to just, you know, make it arch-shaped just to get another half an acre or three quarters of acre. So that, that all has to be questioned at some point, but I think KPR is the first way to go, and we'll worry about that first. So. Any other questions, any board members? So that was, that was just for discussion purposes. Any other questions of anyone in the audience? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
I would like to say to the board of selectmen members that are here, and I, I think this is a long overdue issue, that I'm glad that you're willing to listen. You know, Middleborough is just losing, we're losing our character, we're losing our rural feel. Every house that goes up is just another-- Every house that goes up is just another little piece of Middleboro. I grew up riding horses all over this town, and I can honestly say there are very few places in town now where I would feel safe riding a horse. I used to ride my horse in downtown Middleboro at night. I wouldn't feel safe riding pretty much anywhere now. We're just, we're losing that special part of Middleboro that makes us Middleboro, and we, as a town, we really need to address this, and I think we need to be more proactive, we need to seek out these landholders, and we need to let them know, hey, you know, we're here, we'd love, you know, if you're thinking about doing something with your land, we'd love to have you come talk to us first before it gets to a purchase and sales agreement with the developer, because if we can get to them first, we can negotiate with them. Once they sign that purchase and sales agreement, that number is firm, and that's what we have to match. We wanna get to these landholders before the papers are signed. And I think that if this trust was, you know, committed to and developed, I think this would be a great tool for us to let the landowners know, we're here, we're ready to listen, we'd love to sit with you and talk, and it, and it should kind of go hand in hand with the open space plan. I mean, I'm sure there must be a list for the open space plan of parcels that the town would like to see protected, and that would be the first piece of paper you would go to with this group, is to pull these properties that we feel are crucial to protect and have that trust work on that as well. So, it could be a multifaceted part of the town government, and I think it's well worthwhile, and it's desperately needed, or we're gonna look like Rainham.
Well, I imagine the Concom is already got a pretty good idea of where those parcels that we might wanna have that conversation with.
Well, Conservation's, Conservation is a little different, like Ed said, it's dry land. Conservation may be more inclined to say, hey, this is a vital wetlands area that feeds into this brook, into this, it's got brunal pools, you know, endangered species, versus this is a dry piece of land that, you know, someone could develop. So, they're, you know, while they're kind of in there, their concerns are a little different from, you know, a group that could say, hey, you know, this, do we really want this found land to become a subdivision, or do we wanna protect it because look at all the wildlife that's in there? It's grassland fields for birds, you know, it provides all this habitat, it's a wildlife trail that connects to this, you know, like this seventy acres, it connects to, it may not be hundreds, but it connects to this, which connects to that, which connects to that. So, if you lose those front house lots, it's not as devastating as having the entire parcel developed, because you still have that remainder, and it's good development, you build the houses at the front, you leave the back open, and that's, that's a good way to go, and we really should be looking at that more as a planning board.
Okay. Any other discussion of board members on the chapter sixty-one A, one-twenty, Thomas Street? Hearing none, onto number five. This is something I asked to be put on for discussion, Christmas Tree Shop. I drove by Christmas Tree Shop about four or five weeks ago, and out front, there was a sign that said Hope Warner. I don't think boards necessarily contact businesses after they've given them permits to tell them anything's good, probably more like Mr. Shaw, who was very gracious tonight about a problem that I saw, and he was willing to take care of it. So, I guess, I just wanted to know if the board would like to send Christmas Tree Shop a letter stating we're happy that they're abiding by their permit and hopefully taking local people first. It was just nothing but a thank you, thinking that it's nice to get a letter stating that you're doing something right instead of doing something wrong, so. Any questions of any board members?
I think it's a great idea.
Any questions of the general public?
Yeah, I absolutely agree. Leilani Talde, I am a member of the board of Selectmen, but I'm speaking as a resident as well. Christmas Tree Shop is very good to the town, they contact us anytime they need employees, it goes through our website. Any organizations we have something to do with, they do hire Middleboro people first, they give them preference, and they also give donations to the town constantly, so I just, I'd like to give a shout out to them as well.
Okay. Thank you. I entertain a motion at this point.
Second.
Right, motion by Mr. Frawley, second by Mr. Healy, to send Christmas Tree Shop a letter thanking them, and I would like to, I will say that I was the treasurer of Bay Ruth till we closed it this year, and Christmas Tree Shop actually sent us a check every year. I think, Mr. Healy, you were originally, just to let you know, Christmas Tree Shop, instead of dealing with it day-to-day, what they did is take a lump sum of money and say to the town manager at the time, you know, you, you decide where to do it, you know, what causes are worthy and who should get it, and that's what he did, and, you know, there was probably eight or ten, maybe more nonprofits in town that got that, and Christmas Tree didn't argue with it, they just did it and sent a check every year, and they're very good about it. So, I would say that the letter should thank them for all their donations and for continuing to try to employ town residents for their facility. All right, motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Number two, Amazon discussion, this is another thing I asked to go on the agenda. I've been driving through Amazon's parking lot, probably, and I talked to Mr. Mandiel about this, I probably should do it at midnight some night to see how many vehicles are really in the parking lot, because most of the time when I'm going in, it's pretty well empty. I think that what they're doing, most of the vehicles they're using are registered in Middleboro, have got prime on them, there's probably a dozen to maybe twenty at some times, white vans with New Jersey registrations, there's some three or four white vans with no plates on them at all. So, I believe they may be extras for Amazon, but I'd like to see if the board wants to send Amazon a letter asking them if they have a number of rentals and/or, because they were supposed to register all these vehicles in Middleboro, nothing bad, just to, you know, keep them on their toes and make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to do. I guess my opinion is, I think that what it is, is it's probably overflow vans that they might use once in a while. I don't think a dozen of their vans sitting around make a difference to them, but I'd wanna make sure that if they have regular delivery vans going out of Middleboro, that they are registered in Middleboro if we can.
Motion to that, sir?
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Frawley, second by Mr. Healy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, chair votes aye, unanimous vote. And last one, actually, we've come, it's been a tough process, I've had Mr. Mandiel calling Conroy Development, this is a discussion. Conroy Development came in, wanted the parking lot, which was lot five at the time, ten acres, which, you know, we would have certainly liked to see a building put on so we could get tax money, but we ended up getting, hopefully registrations, which we were just talking about. There is a parking lot there, the parking lot will get assessed. If Amazon ever moves out, we've got it that they can, it's a separate lot that someone might be able to build a building on, so we may get a building someday, but I think, as everyone knows, Conroy Development has been lax at getting this packed full, it seems like we've got commercial development going around us, but just, the park just seems to be sitting there. So, we kind of pushed Conroy Development when they're in there with the Amazon permit, hopefully agreed with a few things, there was a double-bowel road, we've talked to them about a single-bowel road. Today, I got an email from Mr. Mandiel, I've been having him call them every three weeks to a month, they were supposed to have something in, I believe, last October, November, understand we had COVID, but it really shouldn't have stopped them, but I understand also, you know, they, they've been working at it. We met with them, I believe, twice, myself, Ms. McGee, and Mr. Mandiel, with the Conroy team. They showed us some stuff that really was not gonna work up there. I mean, I think people are looking for the bigger buildings, the better. When they came back the second time, they looked much better, they, they didn't understand the twenty-five-foot no-touch zone, they didn't seem to understand hundred-foot from neighboring properties. The first plan was just nothing that, to me, probably never should have been drawn. When they came back with the second one, they obeyed everything that was, seemed to be in their permit. So, today, and I started printing it out, but it was twenty-one pages, it would only print one page at a time, and then I'd have to go in for some reason. I think if I downloaded it and then printed it, might work, but I only got about half that printed, but it was too late, you know, to get it today, which was noon time or so probably, but we did get that, so, the, it is moving ahead. I saw that there was a copy of a check in there, so I don't know, I guess, Ms. Bradley, would you like to talk to that, or would you like Mr. Mandiel to talk to it? What have they done at this point?
Of the modification, they submitted a modification to the subdivision plan, which is for the lengthening of the roadway and stormwater management.
So, it would be the sixth master special permit that they're doing, a modification to the...
It's not, it's a modification to the subdivision plan, not to the special permit.
Okay, okay. So, they've actually submitted them?
Mm-hmm, it was submitted.
So, they've submitted full, full-scale plans?
Yes, yesterday.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
They have, they have some things that they need to do before it's stamped in as complete.
Okay.
So, it's not scheduled for a hearing yet.
Okay, but, but it's starting to roll?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So, that's just a discussion we were having on that. Any questions of the board members on that?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Or Mr. Mandiel.
Conroy would like to come in on a next meeting, July sixth, to discuss anything that the board may have on the project, because they wanted to rush the submission, I told them maybe they wanted to wait, but they didn't want to, they want the whole process to get going.
And I would like them, or I'd like to push them as much as I could, the one thing I'm gonna say, and I don't want the planning department putting the bill to print these out, but eleven-by-seventeens, we're gonna have to have at least one set of eleven-by-seventeens for each board member, not twenty-four, thirty-sixes, eleven-by, or fourteen-by-seventeens, wherever they are.
Eleven-by-seventeens are the ledgers, leaders.
Yep.
So, they wanna come in on the, on the sixth to discuss?
For discussion?
Well, they've already submitted.
I know.
An application.
I know, they're overlapping things.
That has to be scheduled for a hearing. They should have come in before they submitted the formal application and plan.
And I tried to get them to do that.
That doesn't really make any sense now.
I agree.
I guess I understand what they're trying to do, but I, I would think that they need to, and I'm saying it again, get that fourteen-by-seventeen plans to us, I guess, I don't think, I think because they have actually, you could tell them tomorrow, because it hasn't been stamped in yet, correct?
Correct.
So, it isn't a submission yet.
Correct.
So, I would tell them that, one of two things, if they wanna discuss it at a meeting on the sixth, they cannot submit.
Yeah.
The minute it gets submitted, then it has to go to a public hearing before we discuss it.
Yep.
One or the other.
Right.
I'm not looking to mix words, I'm not looking, see the discussion with a set of plans with no submission, or the minute they want to have the town clerk stamp it in, then we're gonna have to go into the public hearing process. So, but, any other questions of board members and/or the department? Any questions of the general public?
How you doing? Mike Solomini in North Middleboro.
How you doing?
Familiar with the property I think you're talking about.
Okay.
And the difficulties. I'm all in favor of commercial properties and taxes, as what I'm not in favor is more congestion and traffic in that area. And for years, I've been hearing different plans of what we're gonna do, because that road dumps right out in front of the, it's into the rotary.
Yep.
And then you add sprinkle in Amazon at eleven o'clock, and you can't even move down Route twenty-eight eighteen. I live in that area, I don't even go towards the rotary, at that time, it's, it's a lot of traffic, a lot of trucks, they just, keep coming, keep coming, keep coming, you can't get out. So, all I ask is the board to consider, whether it's a parking lot or a building, a big building, what are you gonna do about traffic?
So, I'll, I'll let Mr. Healy speak to this one a little bit, because Mr. Healy's...
It's a hot potato, you just pass it off to him.
I, I usually generally make the last comment, well, that's what I like to do. Mr. Healy is, is somewhat adamant about a ring road.
I've been hearing that for twenty-five years, too.
Well, I understand, and I guess, the problem I have is that we have traffic study people that supposedly tell us, and it's interesting, and I'd be interested in your input on this, do you believe the traffic, Amazon has a very different schedule than most companies. You know, they, their first shipment of trucks go out at twenty after nine, is our understanding, and every twenty minutes, there's approximately twenty to forty trucks that go out. So, they were gonna probably have more of a problem backing out. I go up there fairly constantly, at least once a week, I've never seen more than five or six trucks backed up onto Commerce Way. I'm surprised how many actually take a right turn and go toward the Bridgewater Way.
Well, these all took left towards the rotary, and there were more than five of them, and I was like, what's going on? I think I made a few phone calls, I'm like, what's going on here?
Yeah.
And they just kept coming. It's probably a weekend day, too.
Yeah.
And with Amazon, we all know which direction they're gonna go in this, there's gonna be more trucks.
So, the, the traffic study is gonna, we have in the fifth master special permit, a, a certain point that they're gonna have to put a traffic light in. We've always debated whether that will go at Leona Park Drive or Commerce Boulevard. Mr. Healy is certainly of the opinion that Mass Highway will not let it be at Commerce Park Drive.
You have that Clay Street that's a problem, Clay Street intersects the park.
Right, Clay Street doesn't appear to be a problem for traffic. Certainly, if this boulevard goes across Clay Street, Clay Street would be dead-ended. We're certainly having problems with, and I hate to say it, because they were wonderful, I was on the board back then during the whole process, was Campanelli, but there's not a very good relationship between them and Conroy. So, we're having problems getting that agreement together to have it connected, if it was being, gonna be connected. So, this will be a process that would be approved under the condition that a traffic study, and what we have found is, in commercial, in commercial development, and I will say this most emphatically with Amazon, if you took that size building, not in the Amazon operation, doing what they would do with a regular warehouse, we'd be in trouble. But because they don't start until nine-twenty in the morning, when the traffic kind of subsides, everybody's at the office, they stop moving out, and when they get back is after everybody's left for going home. So, their traffic really is counter to everyone else's. They have traffic, but it's a different time period. So, when you're selling a warehouse, you don't know what you're gonna get for traffic, what you're gonna get for people working there, whether it could be an, it could be an office building. I mean, we have no idea, but we need to plan to get something done there so that they have an idea, that they have a viable road that they can put in. But, they have to keep level of service at an acceptable rate for whatever they're gonna put in there. So, we can approve a road, but it doesn't mean that they're gonna get the building they want. The only thing they're coming in for now, I believe, is modification of the road, and it's our way we would do is say, this road may work, you find the building, then they have to come back for a special permit for each building, then they have to tell us who the tenant is, what the traffic is, and what the level of service will work at, whether of service will work or not, whether it needs a light. Amazon, we got to agree that if, at any point, the board, and I believe it's the board determines there needs to be a light, but that's with the traffic study, that they would put a policeman out there until such time as they got the light up or got the light approved. So, they have made some concessions that we felt safe with. Whether Conroy is gonna be that easy to work with, I don't know, but certainly, we are looking at the traffic as certainly the one biggest problem there.
What happened to the other side? I also heard years ago that they were, that park was gonna go out to Old Center Street.
So-
They only ran right to it.
That-
They were gonna make it a throughway to go up the other way, too.
They actually did put the roadway in. I know back in, it was probably 30 years ago, they actually put the roadway out to Old Center Street, and then they blocked that up, they cannot block that, that's not, not ever gonna happen. Their roadway-
Why is it not ever gonna happen? Instead of dumping it all out at the rotary?
It, well, I shouldn't say dump it out at the rotary, because there's still the question of whether, at a point, whether the traffic study says that they need a light, whether the light goes at Commerce Boulevard or Leona Drive, and whether they have to connect to Leona Drive. That's always, that's still up in the air, that's-
And it will be for another 25 years.
[laughing]
Know that.
Hopefully, this would be my hope, that Conroy has-
I even saw plans once of going, like, around the back of the bank and on that way, that's where the road's gonna go.
Right, that road is still able to be done. I mean, we still have the rights to do that, the question is, is whether it's economically feasible.
And who's gonna pay for it?
Well, there's certainly, I'm not gonna say who needs to pay for it, it's the developer of the property that needs to find someone to pay for it if they're not willing to. Maybe, you know, and I'm not, certainly everybody uses the Amazon name, but if another Amazon came into town, a Walmart that wanted a delivery service there, you know, if they wanted to, they could certainly probably make the numbers work to connect those two roads and put the light there. We have the layout, actually Bedford Street is laid out, I believe another 30-foot wider than it actually is, that's why you see everybody on Bedford Street is backed off. So, the layout got taken at the time so that they can widen Route 28 and put lights in past the Leona Drive, which is the Christmas Tree Shop intersection. So, the hope is that, you know, I mean, I'm not, not gonna deny that the best way to go is to hook Commerce Boulevard into Leona Drive, put a satellite at Leona Drive, and call it a day. Whether we ever get there is a question, and it's whether Mass Highway determines there has to be a light, and that's determined by a traffic study, and then Mass Highway has to determine whether light can or can't go at Commerce Boulevard. If they say it can go at Commerce Boulevard, I don't know that as a planning board, we can force them to put it at Leona Drive, but that's all up in the air. I guess, being a, hopefully planner, my opinion would be, you get them so they might be able to get a building, and then find out if someone can afford the infrastructure to get there. You don't want to try to make them put the infrastructure in and find out they have nobody to pay for a building. So, if someone wants, and it's a substantial building, I believe they've got up to 250 to 260,000 square foot, so-
Probably another marijuana-growing facility, right?
Well, I mean, if that's the case, if that was the case, there wouldn't be many traffic, much traffic coming from it, so-
I was joking, I was joking, you know?
No, no, I'm just saying, that's what, I mean, it really, it really depends on what it could be, that you don't know what traffic you're gonna get. So that's why it seems to be everybody's going, you know, Sora Lakeville is a 400,000-square foot, appears to be spec building going up. It's amazing that someone could build 400,000 square feet and hope they will come, but that's what the bigger companies seem to want to do these days. So, I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Frouting, you said his end.
I think it would be prudent for the planning board to remember that Conroy, the state planning board in town in Middleborough had a very solid and pretty good solution to this about 9, 10 years ago, and at the last minute, Conroy, that fell for the sole purpose of embarrassing Middleborough. I remember that, back when we were hanging out.
Yeah.
So, keep that in mind as we continue to partner with Conroy in the future. Second thing is, is I don't know why you guys won't remember this, but the state assured the town of Middleborough probably a dozen times that the rotary was gonna get the flyover, and that the permit configuration is an interim project.
Yes.
They use that word repeatedly, interim project, the flyover's been passed, and they're gonna, they're gonna build it.
Been hearing that for 25 years, too.
But, this is the latest reiteration of it, is we need to get a gay or a nay from them, because why are we gonna do all this planning as it stands? Because obviously, we know that that's what's gonna happen, they're not gonna build the flyover, but they should tell us that, after they told us that they are gonna build the flyover. So we should get some answers from the state. I repeatedly asked, what, how long is interim? Because, keep in mind, the train station's only interim as well, but they won't tell us, they won't define interim. So, if we're gonna plan, we need some answers from the state, some straight, honest answers. They lie to us all the time, and we need to start getting some honest answers from them.
I agree with that, he's speaking history, and that money that was earmarked for the rotary that, when I'm, oh, the rotary's gonna get fixed, we need the flyover, what it went to the bridge over the Cape, right? That was, oh, it's gonna hap-
No, it's not, no.
Time after time, money gets spent for planning, but nothing ever happens.
We're flushing money down the toilet until we get honest answers from the state.
So, the one thing that we did get out of Conroy, when we were doing the Amazon permit, is at least $50,000 for engineering, and I think they spent well over 100 already, if not more, and we have $400,000 of surety in an account. So, I think they see that $400,000, and we, I think quite beautifully about that, they were adamant that they were only gonna give 200, and the board member made the motion that if it wasn't 400, we would sign the release of Lot 5. So, we do have $400,000, not that that means a whole lot, but I'm sure it does mean something to them, and we're gonna hold that until such time as we hopefully agree or disagree upon what we get. So, we're in much better shape than before we did release that lot, you know, we got the Sorelli Building back up and working, that's a $10 million valuation, or was a $10 million valuation before Amazon went in, so it's $160,000 a year in taxes. It'd be interesting, do you know, Liam, what the taxes are now?
No, we can find out.
So that's what, we should find out, because we actually were getting information from them about registrations, about what was registered in town, and it was pretty substantial at the time. So, I'm not, you know, denying that it appears that 90% of the trucks are registered in Middleborough, but I'd like to be sure that 100% of them came, so.
Anyway, just in summary, traffic, just traffic, let's pay attention to traffic.
I mean, one of the things, and I think you can agree to this, and I was driving down, and actually took three or four pitches, I think it was last Friday afternoon, trying to go home from where the New Harbor One building is, and the traffic was all the way back past CBF, almost to Almaz, from Lot 5. As I was driving down, it was just traffic and traffic and traffic, and I said, when's it gonna stop? And it was past CBF, parking lot, all the way.
Mr. Chair, I do that Monday through Thursday at 5:00, and the traffic is-
Can't go horseback riding anymore, I guess, huh?
Is horrific.
And the T tells us there's no traffic problem.
To your point, I've been only in Middleborough only 25 years, and I moved here for the character, for the space, everything you talk about, I grew up in Quincy, you didn't see horses going down the street or people going into the woods to hunt, so I moved here for the space, and I do see it slowly changing, and like you, I'd like to try to do whatever we can to preserve that.
Do you know what your road used to be?
I do, an airport.
So it's an airstrip.
I took an airplane out of that, and I won in our contest, and it was a free airplane right out of that airport, it's the first time I was ever on a plane, eighth grade.
I planted trees, first thing I did, started planting trees, now they get too many of them. So, but we have enjoyed the open space, the rural character of the town, the neighbors, the community, and here 25 years, we gotta be doing something on it. So, but the traffic, just not just in Middleborough, it's just, I drive into Boston, but it's starting to get bad here, and that's a little unusual. I know the train's gonna change that, too, and some other things. And one person once told me, you can't stop change, but we surely can manage it, and that's what a planning board and other boards try to do.
That's the problem, it appears that traffic studies magically-
Give you what the answer they want.
Don't give us the answer we want, give the developer the answer.
It's like statistics, what answer you want, I'll back into it.
We had a traffic study on that area where the Mary Louses, and the traffic engineer assured the Lakeville planning board that the traffic would never back up at that light past the entrance to Mary Lou's in Seasons. And I would be sitting on the other side with my phone, clicking pitches, and go in and say to the planning board secretary, you know, the traffic engineer said this would never happen, look, look what happened. So, that's what I think about traffic engineers, and they have a left-hand turn, so they have to go across four lanes of traffic to take a left out of Seasons, you wanna talk about a traffic nightmare, when you've got four lanes of traffic at a standstill, because someone's halfway across a lane of traffic to take a left-hand turn out of Seasons.
Oh, like you get to a light and it's red, and there's nobody coming, and you're there for 10 minutes?
Traffic's huge.
And in order for it to change, a car has to come to the other side? It's like, is that ever gonna change?
Mr. Chair, a little PSA on my behalf, please, people, when you're at the intersection where Harries is, and the sign says pull up here for green, there's a white line, please pull up to the white line, because if you don't pull up to the white line, the traffic light is not gonna change.
That's it.
So please, pull up to the white line, go over a little bit, it won't hurt ya, and then it's gonna save a lot of people road rage, people in back there barking your horns and yelling, like, like me, ah!
I do have that problem, just to let you know, I go over the white line, and it doesn't recognize me anymore, and then all pain.
Can you back up and go up again?
Yeah, it's like, you just gotta go up to that white line, it's magic.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion from board members? I didn't stand a motion.
Actually, just real quick, South Coast Rail, just so everybody understands, as per the planning, they're talking about extending the gate line down through Middleborough, and they're in preliminary talks about it, and they haven't invited Middleborough to those talks. Unfortunately, this is the exact same MO that happened when we got this train station. They had their preliminary talks, they sell it to everybody up and down the line, and then they drop a pile in our laps, and we have no say about it. So once again, I think it's been nine years, they've been not telling us about what they're gonna do here in Middleborough, and it continues today.
Was there a meeting?
There was a meeting down the Cape, with the Cape Cod Alliance and the MBTA. Now, South Coast Rail group said that they didn't know anything about it, because apparently they're not a part of the MBTA, although one, somebody in their group was at the meeting. But it's just, and it's not, it's nothing against the people who are at the South Coast Rail here in Middleborough, because they're just doing what they're told. The state has decided, our opinion doesn't matter when it comes to rail here in Middleborough.
Mr. Chair, I live on the west side of Middleborough, by the train bridge next to the cemetery, and sitting out at the fire, probably about 10 o'clock, 10:30 at night, bang, 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 I could hear that construction going on, like it was literally in my backyard, and I looked at my husband, I was like, what is that? And then I was like, oh my God, it's the train station. So I can't imagine what those poor people that are living in that area are going through, because if I can hear it, and I mean, I've got gersons with tractor trailers a block away, and I have the train that goes by, and I don't really hear the train much, because gersons blocks it, but the noise was just incredible.
Anything from any other board members? Stand a motion.
You wanna make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A reminder to the board members, we have documents to sign before you leave.